COVID-19 update from Mr. Bill Webb, Health Officer and Director of Emergency Services. Mr. Webb, floor is yours.
Thank you, Commissioners, and I want to thank the community for the opportunity to address you on this important ongoing health issue. I'm going to be discussing items that are on a slide deck that have been in front of me. I do not have written or written narrative at this point. I will be talking off of the slides. For those of you at home, I'm not sure if they're watching remotely, if they're available, but they will be posted at some point shortly. First, I want to thank all of our partners who worked with us at the Kent Emergency Operations Center the last month since I addressed you on December 7th. It has been a very busy five weeks. We have had a lot of developments that have happened, and I'm going to touch on some of those, and also the spread and prevalence of the COVID virus in our community has dramatically changed as well. So what I'm going to do for this particular presentation, I'm going to divide it into two specific phases. I want to give you an update sort of on the status of COVID-19 in the state and the community, and then I want to spend the bulk of the second part of this presentation talking about our vaccination efforts. Clearly, vaccine and our public health efforts to get it out are at the top of everybody's priority list. I think that everybody wants to hear what we're doing, how we're doing it, and our progress to date. On the first slide, I'm going to just -- and so I have good news and bad news today. I'm going to start with the bad news, and it's sort of the COVID-19 virus, the prevalence in the community. The bad news is, as most people are aware, that the COVID-19 virus is surging in our country, across our state, and in our community particularly. It is running -- it is very prevalent here in the community. It is as acute as it has ever been. We are in the middle of the COVID-19 surge that we had predicted earlier in December as a result of the holidays, the travel, and the social gatherings that happened. So the first slide, to talk on the first slide, this is the total positives across the state. This is statewide numbers. If you look at the right-hand side of the slide, the area highlighted in red, that really illustrates we have had a huge surge since November 17th. And likewise, Kent County has followed along to a certain extent in the surge. This slide also lays out a timeline of the various reopening phases that have happened. And one of the most remarkable things about this particular slide is that the surge that we're currently in, that started in November, is substantially larger than the initial surge in April and May. So we are in the thick of it right now. If we go to the second slide, the second slide illustrates statewide hospitalization utilization. Yesterday, we had an all-time high with just over 1,900 hospital beds statewide occupied by COVID patients. We have had a substantial surge in hospitalizations. And I included this, one, to mention that I am in contact with the leadership at Shore Regional Health. They advise me that they do have bed availability, both at the acute care level and at the ICU level at this time. I'm confident that they have a very robust surge plan in place and that we are in regular communications. So as you can see, at the very right-hand side of this particular slide, I have illustrated, pointed out that you can see the holiday surge that's happened in the last 10 days. So we were watching that closely because hospital utilization is one of the most fundamental metrics that we're watching. We do not want our hospital systems to be overwhelmed with COVID-19 patients because that would be bad for our entire community. The next slide illustrates case counts in Kent County specifically. Since we last talked on the 7th of December, we have had 342 cases, and we have also had six additional deaths since we last met. At this point, 89.7% of those cases have been resolved, and as of Sunday, we had 88 active cases. So as you can see, that line takes a dramatic turn upwards in December and November, and really, the point that this illustrates is that we are, just like the rest of the state, involved in a significant surge that's ongoing, and we are hopeful that -- well, it's a significant surge, and it's not a good development in this particular pandemic. Hopefully, it will be over soon. The next slide just illustrates the number of new cases in the last 14 days. In the last 14 days alone, we have had 152 new cases. Forty-four percent of all cases that have occurred in the county have occurred since November 17th. That's a significant upswing. We are seeing regularly 10 to 20 new cases a day. The prevalence that we have in the community for the virus is as high as it has ever been. The next slide illustrates total case counts by zip code. I include this for all of our folks who are tracking this at home. The biggest development on this slide is that the Better Ten zip code has now crossed the threshold from the number of cases that it can be recorded publicly. So they're now reporting 10 cases. One of the key metrics on the next slide is our seven-day positivity rate. Positivity rate refers to the number of test results that are positive on a daily basis that's averaged over seven days. The good news is that we have consistently been here in Kent County below the state average. Our positivity rate on Sunday was 5.9%, and one of the critical values that we look at in terms of positivity, we want to see positivity rates below 5% in the community. We're sort of in the caution zone between 5% and 10%, and we're keeping a close eye on that. The important thing here is that our positivity rate has been above 5% through the last 23 days, but the good news is that we're still below the state average. On the next slide, this illustrates our case rate per 100,000. Clearly, the number of cases has spiked significantly since November 18th. We have had -- the critical number here is we're looking for case rates below 15 per 100,000. That's the optimal. We want to have as few cases as possible, but the threshold in the community for reopening and resuming normal operations is 15 at this point, and as you can see, we are well above 15. Sort of the alarming item on this particular slide is that for the last 28 days, Kent County has been above the state average for the number of cases. So this particular slide, more than any other one, illustrates that we have a lot of virus in our community. Many, many aspects of our community have been impacted. Families have been impacted, businesses have been impacted, so have governments, schools, and just about every corner of our community has seen some sort of either a positive case or an exposure that requires folks to quarantine at home. So at this point, I encourage every citizen, as we move forward, please limit your social interactions, stay at home if at all possible, be very aware of social distancing and mask wearing. The virus is in our community, and it has never been as prevalent as it has been in the last week. The next slide illustrates sort of our testing success in the community relative to our population. We have always done well on this number. This is sort of a continuation of where we were, where we have been. We're in the top quartile relative to the other jurisdictions. So I think that at this point, before I get into the specific vaccine-specific details, do you have any questions about just the general state of COVID at this point? Okay. I think that's -- it's not a surprise to most folks. I think really the focus of what I want to talk about today is vaccine and our vaccination efforts. We had Pfizer and Moderna vaccination products were approved by the FDA in early December. They have been pushed out to the Kent County community through three avenues. It goes to the local health department, it goes to the hospital system, and it goes to a private pharmaceutical consortium of CVS and Walgreens, or distribution to our nursing homes. So I want to just talk briefly on the next slide about the statewide COVID vaccination plan. Right now, there are three phases. The first phase has been broken into three tiers, tier A, B, and C. We're currently in Phase 1A. We're trying to vaccinate our healthcare workers, the residents of nursing homes, our first responders, public safety personnel, correctional officers, and administrative, judiciary, administrative staff who have frontline interactions with the public. Phase 1B is focused on those over the age of 75, those in assisted living facilities and other congregant care settings, in the education sector, that would be the K through 12 education sector and the childcare sector, and it will also include a significant portion for the continuity of government operations. So that is 1B. Phase 1C is for adults over the age of 65 and other essential workers in industries such as lab services, agriculture, manufacturing, postal services, et cetera. Then Phase 2 is all adults 16 to 64 at increased risk of severe COVID-19 illness, and then, of course, Phase 3 would be the general population following after that. So that's the plan as it is currently written. That is a plan that is promoted by the Maryland Department of Health and the Governor. This is not specific to the Kent County Health Department, and it follows closely the guidelines that have been issued by the Centers for Disease Control. So the big question really for all folks that we're feeling quite readily is, when can I get vaccine? When can I get vaccine? We're feeling a ton of calls about this very important subject. So just give you a timeline. In Phase 1A is currently ongoing. We're looking to enter on the -- this is on the next slide. On the next slide, we are -- Phase 1 is ongoing. This is our healthcare workers, who are most vulnerable in nursing homes and assisted living programs. Phase 1B, those over the age of 75, we're hoping to have in late January, hopefully starting sometime either in the third or the fourth week of January, we are gearing up for that. Phase 1C, we're looking to start sometime in early March, and then Phase 2 is going to be in the spring, and we're not quite sure about Phase 3. The critical component about what impacts our ability to get people vaccinated, there are three main things. One is the vaccine supply. There is a very limited amount of vaccine supply, and we are prioritizing it for individuals who are at greatest risk of getting sick and dying from this disease, or those who have to tend to those individuals who may be positive or sick. So the priority here is to help the healthcare workers and the first responders and those who are at greatest risk of adverse consequences if they get infected. So the vaccine supply is limited. We're also acutely aware of our staffing that to get vaccine out, we are in the process. The Health Department has hired seven additional nurses to provide vaccination services. They are at the Health Department today. They are shadowing other nurses who are vaccinated. We have a clinic ongoing for our first responders today, and hopefully they will be able to vaccinate on a full-time basis, starting next week. And then, of course, other things that are out of our control, such as weather, insurrection, or other events beyond Kent County. So as I mentioned on the next slide, in Phase 1, the vaccine is in short supply, and what we're doing, the way it is being allocated and delivered, I just want to talk about that for a minute. So we're getting deliveries once a week. We are getting allocations once a week from MDH, and the number of doses will vary depending on how much the state gets and where MDH decides their priority statewide are. One of the changes that I learned about yesterday is that the federal government and their agencies were originally intended to be distributors of vaccine, along with local health departments and state agencies, and my understanding is some of those agencies are now going to the local health department for vaccines. So the good news is that really doesn't impact Kent County a lot. We don't have a lot of federal institutions here in county, which is good, but it's a dynamic process, and we're getting deliveries once a week. And one of the critical things that we're hearing is our citizens really want to know, when can I get vaccinated, and how that happens? I'll get into that in a minute. One of the crucial tenants that we're working with setting up appointments for individuals, we are not publishing appointments until we have vaccine in hand. We have to have the vaccine before we can schedule the appointment because the logistics of if we miss a delivery or we don't get what we think we're supposed to get, canceling 300 appointments the day of or the day before is a recipe for bad customer service, and we'll set up difficulties with folks who don't get the message for one reason or another. So the Health Department is, once we get the vaccine, we're then setting up the appointments. Usually, the appointments are a week in advance. We can only do a week in advance because we're getting vaccine only once a week, and that is the -- that, to a certain extent, is driven by the processes of the federal government who are providing the vaccine to us. We're willing to work with folks in terms of getting folks vaccinated and getting appointments. I think that has been one of the most difficult issues at this point, is one, answering the question, when can I get vaccinated, and where can I get vaccinated? A lot of that depends on our vaccine supply. So I just want to talk about the Health Department's -- on the next slide, the Health Department's mass vaccination plan. We have dedicated the entire first floor for vaccination activities. We're doing vaccinations by appointment only. So the folks, a lot of questions come in, how can I get an appointment? And one of the things that we do with appointments is right now, because we're Phase 1A, we're doing it by appointment only and by invitation, because we're trying to get all of our healthcare workers and first responders vaccinated. But at some point in the near future, we will be publishing appointments through a link on the Kent County Health Department webpage. The links will -- you'll be able to click a link and select a time. If you were in -- we ask that if you were in that specific demographic, and part of registering for an appointment is you have to answer a number of personal health questions, and you have to provide your insurance information. So the appointments will be -- we'll use an information technology system, and we will also provide availability, limited availability for phone service. One of the things that we're working with some of our Department of Aging partners to facilitate volunteers and other agencies to help those who are not computer savvy, who need help registering for appointments, who may not have a telephone, who may not have a computer, may not understand how to use their computer. We're working with our partners there to provide some services to help folks get signed up for the appointments when they're available. So our mass vaccination plan, at this point, we will be able to have anywhere from two to eight teams of vaccinating nurses. Each team can vaccinate six to seven individuals in an hour, which means our maximum throughput is about 330 vaccinations a day. When you come through and get vaccinated, you will receive a card, you will receive information about the vaccine that you have just gotten, and any side effect information. We're going to ask that you provide your health insurance. If you haven't, the vaccine will be provided to all citizens at no cost to you. We may bill your insurance for an administrative fee, but that particular decision is going to be made by MDH, and we're not -- at this point, we're collecting it, and that may happen. As we move out into Phase 1B and recognize that those who are over 75 have transportation difficulties, even those who are 65 and above, for those who have transportation difficulties, we are going to have clinics that will be held at Rock Hall and Galena, and fire companies very much like our influenza immunization, and we're also looking at another site here in Chestertown that is not the Health Department, that's a little bit bigger than what we have space-wise locally at Lynchburg Street. Next slide. So the general challenges that we have with vaccine is that right now, the products that have been approved require two inoculations separated by at least 21 days. The vaccine is very temperature sensitive and has a short shelf life, and what we have seen now is vaccine is coming in little vials with 10 doses in each vial, and so, once you puncture a vial, you have to use the vial in five hours or you have to throw it away. So essentially, if you're vaccinating folks, you need to have at least 10 people lined up in the course of the day for just one vial of vaccine. So this is the way it's currently packaged. It really lends itself to mass vaccination clinics as it currently stands. So the temperature sensitivity is -- that's just the manufacturer's instructions that we have to follow, and we are more than willing to do that, but it's not as easy as the polio vaccine where it's oral drops that can happen at room temperature. So I do want to talk about vaccine hesitancy. We have people that, in our community, that sort of question the efficacy and necessity of the vaccine. At this point, anecdotally, we have seen in our healthcare providers, we've seen an uptake, for those who are eligible, an uptake of anywhere from 50 to 70%, which is, we knew that that was going to happen, and I think that when we get out into the general population, we'll see similar numbers. But I encourage all of the citizens to become as educated as you can on the various vaccine products and the benefits that they provide. The vaccine isn't a perfect product, but it's a heck of a lot better than getting sick with COVID-19. I mentioned the online appointment database is potentially being a barrier. We're working on workarounds for that, and then, of course, vaccine supply and appointments will likely only be available a week in advance in response to making sure that we're setting up appointments only when we have vaccine on hand. So the last -- oh, so how are we doing? How is Kent County, how's the vaccination product in Kent County? The next slide illustrates our numbers and also provides a reference for the state. At this point, we have administered 696 doses to Kent County residents. That represents about 3.6% of the population. This is for the first dose. We're well above the state average at this point. At 3.6%, the state average is 2.1%. Second dose, we're still very early in the second dose. We only have six individuals who got the second dose, and that's just sort of a fraction, a very small fraction of the population. So at this point, we're doing, in terms of getting the vaccine out to our citizens, we're above the state average at this point. We do caution that as other communities get ramped up and more vaccine becomes prevalent, our numbers will likely go down simply because we don't have the same number of vaccinators and resources in the community to deliver vaccine. For example, I mentioned that at some point, the vaccine is going to become available to healthcare providers, to commercial pharmacies, very much like the flu vaccine is. Unfortunately, in Kent County, we do not have the same density and presence of those private sector folks that other communities do. So we are ramping up. We want to stay above the state average, but we do have specific constraints that could cause issues. But at this point, I'm very pleased with what, at least the plan that we have in place. We have a clinic going today. One of the issues that we have is that we cannot move into the next phase of vaccination without the approval of MDH and the Governor. I have mentioned very specifically that we are not to start moving into Phase 1B until we have to go ahead from there. So we are working with them and the other populations. So the last slide that I have at this point is the Health Department has gotten overwhelming response from the community on how to help with vaccinations. This is one of the benefits of living here in Kent County. We have a lot of people who have volunteered help. One of the things on this particular slide is how to provide guidance for those who do want to help. We ask that you sign up through the Maryland Response Medical Reserve Corps. That is a clearinghouse that we can use to get people in and to get them trained. One of the big benefits is it not only centralizes the information for those human resources, it also provides some liability protection for it also provides some liability protection for, you know, for the folks who are working and for the Health Department. So we just ask that volunteers, you know, that volunteers sign up and have their own transportation and be able to stand for extended periods of time. If you're interested in becoming a volunteer vaccinator, we do ask if you have an active medical license, nursing license, or pharmacy license, or a paramedic license. So that, that's all I have at this point, and I'm sure that you have a number of questions.
One of the first questions I have, we have, we require us to do doses. And our administration that's coming in has said they're going to send out the vaccine to get as many people vaccinated as we can the first time, and hope that our manufacturers will have the doses for the second time. What's the, we, here in Kent County, are we going to be able to assure the people, like these 696 people who have gotten their first dose, that they can get their second dose? We've said all along that we want to follow the science, and now all of a sudden, it seems to me we've thrown the science to the wind, and it's not, Sunday morning, the doctors from the National Institute of Health were on TV saying we need to have the second dose. I mean, there's some flexibility, they say, well, there's three weeks or four weeks, but we don't want to not have the second dose, or, because we just don't, we, like he said, that we felt that, you know, there is going to be some protection from the first, but to really do what we want to do, we've got to have the second dose. So where are we in Kent County on that? Are there second doses there for the 696 people? Or are we planning that we're going to get some?
So I have been advised that the allocation that we get will, when we cross into having need to do the second dose, that we will, we will be augmented in our supply to the level of vaccinations that we have done and we need for the second dose, so we don't have to necessarily specifically request. We have been assured that we will get the vaccine for the second dose when we need it. And one of the things that, you know, being a little bit skeptical, one of the things that the Kent County Health Department has done, at least from a, you know, a planning perspective, when we have done the clinics at this point, at least for the first three weeks, we have only done clinics on two days a week. And the idea is that when we get into, you know, a month into vaccinating, we will be able to then do follow-up vaccinations two days a week to capture the people who've already gotten the first dose, and then have, you know, two to three days a week for new folks. So, you know, of course, it all depends on the supply. You know, we want to do it, I would do it seven days a week if we could do that, but it really, it depends on the supply that we've got and, you know, really, you know, the staffing that we need to. One of the things that, when we do a mass vaccination clinic, one of the challenges that we have is it takes between 20 to 25 staff members to put on a mass vaccination clinic, and it really does require a significant percentage of all the Health Department employees. So we're willing to, we're committed to getting this done. But, you know, to answer your question specifically about vaccine supply for, you know, for second doses, we have been assured that when the time comes that we will get sufficient doses to meet, you know, to meet those who have already been vaccinated the first time.
I could say, I think that's a big concern, people, you know, that they will get their second dose. So that means it's good to hear. I mean, like, I'm assuming if you had 30 people that are doing their second dose, and you got 50 doses in, that those 30 will go to those that have already been had their first dose, and you have 20 new people. I mean, I'm just seeing the number there.
It certainly presents many logistical challenges.
Right. Oh, it's a challenge, I'm sure. Now, the other question, you know, we live so close to Delaware and whatnot, is there any chance of people are going to be, could go to Delaware and be vaccinated that live in Kent County?
Okay, so that's a great question, and what we have been advised, what I learned yesterday, that the CDC has issued guidance that says that because the federal government is paying for the vaccine, that if we have individuals who are from out of state, we cannot turn them away because they're from a different state. So if that applies in the state of Maryland, I would guess that that also applies in the state of Delaware. So, you know, I think that that may be available. And I'm, don't, I'm sorry, I don't stay up on the state of Delaware sort of process. I'm having up with Maryland. But, you know, that was the ruling yesterday, so it should theoretically be available. Don't know if that is in actuality going to happen.
I mean, I guess, you know, if a person had a doctor or something, you know, Delaware, you know, could they get one? And I won't say they shouldn't, or, I'm just, do you have any?
Just one simple question, and that's, the second dose that people will get, is it just the duplication of the first, or is it, is there any difference in it at all?
No, it's exactly the same. It's the same quantity.
So, you know, no chance of getting them mixed up, and, you know, but they're both, they're all the same. You just got to get it twice.
Well, the, both of the approved products, at this point, you have to get two doses. If you were immunized with the Pfizer product, your second dose needs to be the Pfizer product.
I understand, yeah.
So that's why we have a risk, if we just release everything now, the people who've got the first dose may not be able to get the second dose of the same product if we were not to think this through, or just put everything, flood everything right now.
So are you getting both products now, or just?
No, we are only getting the Moderna product and the local Health Department.
Okay. And you think that's, I don't intend you that it'll only be the one product?
I think that we will, we will work with whatever product we're going to get. You know, I'm not, you know, if we get, I mean, obviously, we would like, for consistency's sake, to have the same product, but we have the ability to accept whatever is shipped to us and to get, you know, if this is what it means to get Kent County citizens vaccinated, we will work with them. We will figure out the process to ensure that you get the right vaccine at the right time from the right manufacturer.
And you keep, the Health Department, I could say here somewhere, they're giving the paperwork.
If I came in to get the first one, you would give me the paperwork, and it would show what vaccine that I got, so that when I come back for the second one, you would make sure that?
Correct. And one of the, not only will you get the paperwork, one of the things that happens when you get vaccinated is that information automatically gets uploaded to the state information technology system for immunizations. Now, that's called Immunet. And when you come back for your second vaccination, before, you know, anything is done, our nurses check in the Immunet system to make sure which product you got.
Okay, that's what I, that was my question. Because someone may not, you might give them a card, but they might not know where that card is in three weeks.
So the state automatically, when you go to get vaccinated, you get in the database. So the state knows who you are and what vaccination you got and when you got it.
Correct, because that's going to be vital for the second dose. And also, it, you know, it allows flexibility. Say, for instance, you were vaccinated in Kent County, and then you moved to Garrett County. It provides the ability for the folks in Garrett County, when you need to get that second vaccine, to look you up and verify when you got it and what you got, so that you get the correct immunization.
Yeah, and plus, they're, it's allowing, I'm sure that they're putting you in a database so they can follow if there's any complications, I mean?
Well, the database is, you know, is used for the clinical services. It's also very important to the logistics and, you know, because the feds and the state are tracking, you know, how much we get, how much we use. All of that stuff is automatically tracked if you have, if you're using an information technology system. And that's why, you know, that's why, you know, it all starts with that first appointment and going through that system. And, you know, it's kind of a hassle at the beginning, but for a lot of the administrative and backend stuff, it's absolutely vital.
Well, I know we don't have the population of a lot of people, I understand that, but it seems like that things are going very well in Kent County so far. I mean, you're not hearing, you're hearing on TV, whatever you can believe, that they're having to throw some way and because, for whatever reason and stuff, or they can't get it dispersed or distributed properly, and so there's some horror stories out there, and it seems like things are running much smoother here in Kent County, thankfully.
And so far, you know, we have an excellent team at the Health Department. We have all of our partners in the Emergency Operations Center that have been very cooperative. The, one of the appeals that I can make to the general community at large, please be patient, you know, we want to get you vaccinated, we want to get you in, and we will as soon as we possibly can.
Have we seen any, and you hear about adverse reactions to the vaccine, have we seen any of that here in Kent County? Like, your 696 people received first doses, is that?
We have had some folks who, you know, who have had, you know, who have had reactions. One of the, you know, there, one of the things that there are sort of predations of reactions, you know, I think the, as far as the most severe anaphylactic reactions, we have, you know, we have not had those to the point where we have had, you know, used an Efrain can or to, you know, to get somebody to the emergency department at this point. We have not, we have not had that, but we certainly have had, you know, individuals who, when they get vaccinated, might feel lightheaded or feel their heart, you know, beating quickly. We have paramedics, you know, as part of the team, the vaccination team, that if that happens, then, you know, we get them into the care of the paramedics. One of the, one of the things that's unique with this particular vaccine, unlike the flu vaccine, we do a drive-through. You come through, we vaccinate you, you're on your way. And one of the critical things that we do with, since Moderna is such a new product, really nobody, nobody, nobody has been exposed to it yet, we have a waiting period. We ask everybody who gets vaccinated, please wait for 15 minutes, because that 15 minutes will, you know, if you're going to develop an adverse reaction, you know, develop during that timeframe. And then there, so, you know, we have a mechanism for that. There are also side effects. One of the things that, you know, that can be documented, side effects is soreness, you know, a day or so after you get the injection, you know, it sort of feels like your shoulder is sore, you can, it can be, you know, warm to the touch. That is, you know, that's a side effect, but it's an indicator that the vaccine is working for you in your body. And, you know, we certainly have had reports of that as well. So, you know, it's, you know, we're keeping close eyes on side effects and, you know, the health of the folks who get vaccinated, you know, at the clinic.
Well, do you have any questions?
No, I'm good.